I'll I'll take many.
Okay, so you all heard. So like I said, this is gonna be, this could be a quick meeting or something, so we'll go with the minutes.
Well, when I start, you all mean you'll know it's on.
It's we're out for two hours early.
You're Friday, not Monday.
True, that's right, you can beat up for all week. So this is the agenda for today. And then the minutes. These are the last minutes. That Anne sent out. I think Ryan, you made a couple of comments?
Yeah. I wanna make sure they will change.
Okay.
And then the only other part that I saw. The medium income in North Stone. It's not the state.
That's correct, yeah.
As far as been, oh, okay, there's, there's one, yeah. And then the only other question I had was, it says something about. We agreed to endorse the program. We need to watch it.
I thought that's what we, we'll go over the report and I'll show you how I wrote it up. It it's for the firefighters.
Endorse the firefighter, backing them up. When the fire department statement spoke to us about that, so we're just endorsing it that we're in, we're, we approve what they're doing or we're in line with it. It doesn't affect us, right?
Right, but we can, well, nothing's final, so we can, actually, I thought today. There's a few things we're gonna have to go over now. We got a lot to do. So you're gonna have, and we're all gonna be able to opportunity to review this now that this is a little bit of new information here. So what, we'll come back to that, okay? The last thing on this package I gave you is the agenda for Monday.
Okay.
Because I had to post this because. I had to be posted yesterday.
Right.
And you'll notice at up at the top, I need to write it in regular meeting. No longer.
Right, special, right, yeah.
But that's why I had it in earlier. And so if I came in and internet's. You need another, I need another one for you. I said, okay, I'll be right back. So it isn't terribly different from the one we're working on now, because there isn't terribly much different stuff for us to do, I don't think. So just so you know, if you want to change anything on that. You can come back, we can. It has to be posted. So can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I have a motion.
My second.
Okay, are there any favor? Any extensions? Okay.
That's, I know I thought about that in a certain way, I just put.
In favor.
Or, yeah, five, oh, well, yeah, five zero zero.
Okay, so now, I'll become that there is no one here and there's no one waiting on the, on the internet, so we can move on. Before we get into my findings, which are interesting, I think, does anybody here have anything to add at this moment?
Mine is minor and brief. I had gone in and asked for the. Brand list in a certain format, you just, Lou was able to pick that up.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I don't want it. So I have not received the yet. The only thing that I did accomplish along those lines was I did take our current mill rate. And determine the break points of where people are at a thousand dollars in property taxes and under two thousand, three thousand. So if anyone wants to see this little chart, all I did was quickly go from. One thousand, thirteen thousand in taxes, every thirty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty of your assessment. Put you in the next thousand dollar range, if you wanted to do that.
So John, that's all on property?
It's all property.
Uh, home being property or?
At this point, it's mill rate on your assessment, so it would include your land and your house, any outbuildings.
Okay, but not your car rating?
No, not cars, that's, that's a separate thing. So this is just property tax. This is the others.
So the only thing I would say, you know, where my thoughts, I've been thinking about this and thinking about. And not that it's just my thoughts on the doing a lot, you know, fee per service versus the mill rate, those people, to your point here. Could be adversely affected by it being equally divided.
Right, that's the next phase of what I needed to do, that's why I needed that grand list.
Right.
Itemized from zero taxes up to whatever the highest person's tax is, based on their property assessments. So the way this is, when you look at this, so if you're, say you have a house worth two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, well, you'd be just under eight thousand dollars in taxes. So when you look at this, when you see the number to the left, the assessment, you'll then see what approximate it is. Once I get that. On the list, and then I can find out who fall, how many houses fall in each bracket. That's what I had done back in twenty eighteen, now I'll have the updated numbers.
Yeah.
And then if we. With this suggested program at just under five thousand. In, if everything was divided, the seventeen million that we collect divided equally amongst all, collect all taxable lots. Then I would know how many people were affected and by how much, because with this list, I'd be able to determine that, how many lots fall in each category.
Gotcha.
So until I get that number, I can't finish that now.
Okay.
And as you can see, it did that.
All right, John, I'm gonna write that off.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
John, John presented. Financial data on lots in the segments, and we'll fine tune that.
Yeah, more detail to follow.
Yeah.
That's the only copy I have.
Oh.
No, over the weekend, we're meeting on Monday, so over the weekend, I'm gonna try to get.
This is, uh.
Yeah, that's a, that's a construction work. You grab something.
I was at the end of the notebook and I ripped off the back.
So I've got five.
Beads next, you know?
Do you work with Excel or do you need?
I do not have Excel at all.
So, so do you need me to? Email it to you as a PDF?
If it's a PDF, I can work.
Okay, and that's what I'll do. I'll, I'll email you.
Thank you for that.
And so the PDF file, it'll be. Four different PDF file, in all one Excel file.
Too long, too long.
No, because that's the way I've sorted it, I've done it by separate, separate tabs. So that means each one of those tabs, the way I've sorted it, you're gonna get a separate.
Okay, but there, the repeated information is laid out in the different examples with the different.
Yeah.
That is great.
Okay, I can send that to you. If I can't, because the files can be, I'll put it on a stick and give it to you.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Yes, fee for municipal service for law.
Okay. Now. Onto my report.
Yes.
So. I, um. A couple of interesting meanings.
We'll sing this song, what are you gonna do?
The middle I began, it's, uh. So I, I, I went and visited with Daryl, and he gave me a bunch of information about the programs that we have, that we have different. Tax. Benefits, the difference of. All the information. And then I had to go over and ask Christine. And she answered just about. How much the firefighters. Where that category was, because you talked a little bit about that. So now I started, so. Oh, definitely, so then, all right, so what, so, so I just asked a off the cuff question about where is the. Circuit breaker money in the town's budget? There isn't any. We haven't gotten any money since twenty sixteen. Which coincidentally is the year after that report that we have. Came out. That's why when we looked online, we couldn't find it, because it hasn't existed since twenty sixteen.
The program no longer exists?
Because it's state reimbursement. The program still mandated.
But it's not funded.
It's not funded. So. I got, I put numbers on the pages this time, so we can go back and forth there a little bit. I wrote this up. Today, so that's why you didn't get it. You didn't want a copy. But anybody watching, and I will ask you to read this. Like for Monday. But if you go. Just give you the. I like it's page. Seven. Just put a page seven. And when you, the old, the old one is completely different one.
I wrote on here.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to see it.
Oh, good, yeah, that's for sure, but, but just. Because I rearranged everything. So just take a moment and. That's seven.
Oh, you know, you've got two sevens, that's the problem.
All that's because I had, I we have. Yeah, the second seven.
The real seven, okay.
You don't want, I didn't take it out.
Does this come out of the program, come out of this?
No, no, let's stay. So the second number seven, okay. Oh, we're not accounting anything. Just take a moment. I think this sums up what I have come down.
It is the second seven, there is another seven. But this is the one we want.
Just, just take a moment, read that. So. What's the thing? I've got. The two things off, I can get any copies of this. For the wine, we get nine hundred and eighty dollars. This is right at all, and. For the entirety of the veterans program, we get sixty-four hundred dollars.
Okay. Do they actually get that?
They get the money. They do get that money.
Okay.
The last time we got the money from the circuit breaker program. Was in twenty sixteen, and it was for thirty-three thousand dollars.
Wow.
And. They don't do, they don't work together on this, but Daryl had no idea. That he wasn't, that we weren't getting reimbursed. He really quote, we're getting reimbursed. Because the person he works with, that he has to submit all of his reports to, and. Just do a lot of work to do this, never told him about what we funded that in the year.
I guess the other question I have is, why hasn't our administrator told him that he's never gotten funded?
There's, there's no, yeah, listen, yeah, I mean, there should be better communication and things, but there isn't.
I would think the state would write something about it. If they're not gonna, if they have one paper that says they are gonna reimburse one. Then they should, and they're not going, then they should notify all the towns, the other towns not getting reimbursed.
It's still mandatory. The circuit breaker program, as Daryl has it outlined here, the town has to do it.
Unfunded, yeah.
But it's done, another unfunded, rented. So they start it, they fund it, and then they stop it.
And to your.
It could be.
Every town should be.
But if they're representatives, say, okay, you're all representative, you better keep your butt organized, you know, I mean, because if, even get us some money or something.
It's not being communicated between two offices right here in town.
Yeah.
It's. Perhaps very likely that even the people that sit there in Hartford don't know what's happening, because their finance committee is a limited. Participation rate in, in what goes on.
I gather. The finance board doesn't know.
Yeah. Doesn't seem like they would, they would have rather raised a flag, I hope.
Oh, and so, yeah, he's supposed to take care of.
I guess my next question is, so how much is the town now at the moment? Do you know?
On the programs we're looking at. Because if you notice in the very bottom, I said. The numbers I talked about don't include tax advantages or tax benefits for farm buildings. Economic development and solar, because. Don't know what we're doing that, and that's outside of reporting. So it turns out the difference between two hundred and forty thousand. And seven thousand.
Per year.
Yeah. So.
Since twenty sixteen.
So what does boil down? Well, that's just from the circuit breaker. The money for the veterans has been going down steadily. Every year. That's why it's so gone now, at six thousand dollars.
So is it, uh, when you say it's going down, is that from the state?
Yeah.
For reimbursement. So again, reimbursements are just.
A lawyer. Tell the lawyer, you know.
You know, the other part of it is that you look at, it's not just this. The school systems are loaded with unfunded mandates. And sometimes you say, why? They'll even not understand. What the program is. I mean, I'm, I'm not here, but I was on the board of finance for Charrohold High School. Which, and it's all the same, I mean, it happens in the same place. I mean, there were millions of dollars unattended that we had to do.
If they voted on it.
Didn't get it, Martin. Well, in Hartford.
So can I just, uh, two hundred and forty thousand, it says it's for tax programs including both mandatory and option. Do you know the breakdown of that two hundred and forty one, which is active or mandated to, you have to allow, do you know what that is, sort of?
Yes, we can, can, can we keep that? And I apologize, this is the best copy.
Oh, I see.
So if you go back a couple pages.
What page number?
It's one that's outnumbered, because it's just an unknown. Exhibit one, go to you from very.
Yeah.
So it's the math.
I got it.
Oh, it's a pretty thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Under one is.
So what are we looking at then?
What you do, if you can look on the left, we see total.
Grand total?
Yeah, on the left, so the very first line. It says non-reimbursed exemption, it's one point, that's one million, eight hundred ninety. If you go all the way down to the grand total, eleven million dollars. So you multiply that by point zero zero two six eight. And that's how much money the town gives in tax breaks.
So that gets multiplied by?
The, the mill rate.
Okay. Or whatever that is.
What I saw online was two, two eight six. That's what he said too, but online it's.
That no one's updated that either. Last year for the first time, they lowered it a little bit.
Yes.
So it's now two eight twenty-eight.
They're dumping that from there.
Two eight four five, it's supposed to be the current. Unless. So we have a discrepancy there.
And that's what the break we're getting, is that what you said?
What did I, what?
You're not, you're directing a million from eleven million, and then?
No, I just was showing you the total. So if you just use that totally, you just use that far left column, all right column, all the way down to the bottom. So it's eleven million. Two eighty-five. Eight three five times point zero zero two four five. Twenty-seven thousand dollars in total, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred. In reduced elections from the town's brand list because of assessment. Uh, reductions. It does not include the tax credits from the program, the circuit breaker program, because that's a tax credit.
Right. Comes off.
Right, and I've got a number for that, another thirty thousand. It's in, it's actually in the next page, so.
I mean, I'm gonna just throw this off out right now. I'm sure we're gonna talk about it, but. They're not, they would not be going back to Bob at this point and say, you are asking us to do X. It's already costing the town. X without even getting reimbursed. So are you in the mindset of. Putting more money back on my. The town to pay.
Yeah.
And without enough to everybody, you know?
If I, I had to guess, and I'll be happy to talk to him Monday before we, we're, we're convene. They're gonna say, oh, tell such a thing. If you think we should or not. As it turns out, if we make the, take a moment.
Yeah.
And, and look at exhibit two, two pages we exhibit two.
Yeah.
The one, the first one is the existing program. And if we, as it is right now, also remember that it's different than what we originally got from Daryl.
The two, the two.
Yeah, exhibit two, I wanted to, I didn't want to make it really small so it'd be easier to write. So exhibit two, page first one, is the existing program, and then the second one, exhibit two. Propose is what we've proposed. So you will see that. We will. Daryl, which only told us. That the, the town is providing. Sixty-three thousand dollars in benefit. We're not.
Okay, where the benefit right now, as you're saying, is forty-nine thousand.
That's the maximum benefit it could be. That we don't know what is. The only way we'd be able to know what it is. Is for Daryl to go search the sixty-one people.
Right.
And see what each individual.
Is getting.
Benefit, because. It could be the maximum or could be the minimum. It could be a single person in the house, it could be a family.
And we don't know that.
Don't know that. So the only way we could know that is if he goes in and. Exams every single sixty-one and says, this is their individual benefit. Which.
You would think.
I don't think we can make the recommendation what you're saying until we be squared away simply because.
Well, yeah, now from.
We're, we're getting this information.
Right, here, right, so here's. What I did here. I should reflect the maximum. Benefit that could happen under the existing program. It's not this much money. It can't be.
Yeah.
Because not everybody's coming with the maximum. In fact. One person. That is in the lowest level. Actually got one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Wow.
Not the twenty-fifty. Just a little bit of a difference.
No, but yet, what you, so what you've done, what you did get is the number of people that are currently.
On the program.
On the program.
And the problem is, when we recommend something different. The number of people are gonna change, because we're gonna up income.
Right.
And, and the distribution's gonna be different.
Yeah.
So that's why on the next page, I showed the maximum possible cost.
One of the potential reasons why the benefit also might be different is there was a stipulation that you couldn't receive more than X benefit than your tax in liability.
Well, you can only get fifty percent of it. So my guess is the person that got the twelve thirty-six is paying twelve, two thousand, five hundred and. Sixty-two dollars, something two dollars, and so they got half their back.
They were back in twenty eighteen, there were twenty-six people in that category. So that could be the explanation why it's a lower.
So. We've never been in a position that we could have gone to the finance board and say, this is how many people will be in the new program, right? We all know.
Because we have it.
And they don't, who's gonna be in there next year, even if they don't change it, right? So I thought the best thing to do is to show the maximum benefit. The maximum cost to the town.
With the crack.
The column program, which is the follow right column on exhibit two, the first, what it is now. And then the maximum. That we could possibly pay. Under what we had talked about proposing.
Right.
Is seventy-three.
And that's on the existing default, using.
No, I added, because the income level goes from forty-nine thousand, one hundred.
Okay.
To six thousand, like arbitrarily added fifteen people.
Okay.
Just to, just to do it, right? I mean, it could be twenty, it could be two.
So based on these numbers, with the increase of, essentially seventy-three thousand, two fifty, that's an increase of thirty-four thousand, two fifty. Again, I'm looking at it from a different perspective, you divide that by the. Three thousand, twelve hundred and forty-four lots in town, and that's a ten dollar difference in your taxes to increase to help these people.
Right, and, and another way to look at it is. Even at the higher rate. We're talking about a benefit to elderly individuals, household, households with elderly individuals. That are earning. Substantially less than the median income for the town. It amounts to point zero zero five, one half of one percent. Of the tax bill, of the total revenue generated by the town. So I think the question is. Is it appropriate to provide tax benefits? To, to those individuals at that level. Regardless of what we get, if we get money from the state or not. I think that's the question.
My question goes back to right.
So, but, but, well, to me, the question is, given. That this is geared toward, where I can, like I said. That the program is designed to help. Individuals that are earning subs, household income is substantially less. Than the town's median income. Is it appropriate? To provide them with tax assistance. Equal to. One half of one percent. Of the town's budget.
Equal to one.
One half. Of one percent. Of the town's. Budget.
How quickly is the audio or video of this up online?
I don't know.
I'm gonna think pretty quick.
Just for clarification purposes, if you need that.
Yeah, you may just get it back.
Said it's the pinkly off the top of your head the first time.
Yeah, so we could maybe, I thought it's okay.
To clarify, that, that might be the way to.
Well, and, and to that point, when these minutes go out, you have to be really, you know, you'll read it, and you would make the edit appropriate to that. Can I just add one more thing about that? The minutes should be read as soon as they come out, and I know people have time restriction, but to. Delay it and delay it, delay it, you know, it's not fair to the person writing the minutes, you know? So we're not sending it out multiple times, because then you're not knowing what they're looking for, and I don't mean to be nasty or anything, you know, about that, but I just think it behooves us. I mean, we're not gonna be together all that long, longer. I mean, we're not gonna be together all that long, longer, uh.
Well, you're setting, you're setting up a trap. And, um, but if you're convincing them that it shouldn't go out.
Right.
Oh, absolutely, but I'm just saying, doing that, doing time, you know, doing time, right?
Okay.
Yeah. If I was, we're gonna say, just say, kind of discussion on that.
Yeah.
You know, not every single.
Yeah, and they say you don't have to do it verbatim, you know?
You can't do it verbatim.
Yeah.
Because, uh, if you try to do it verbatim, then a week later. You can't approve the minutes, cause nobody can remember exactly what the person said.
Yeah.
So that's where the more general minutes are.
Right.
More appropriate, so long as you get the gist of it.
Basically, yeah, just the gist of what you're doing, yeah.
I, I totally can.
I do, I know you're, you know, we've been talking, talking about. Like. Oh, for quite a while now. We're on a short, we're on a short.
We've got two weeks to go.
So.
What?
Um, I say because of misinformation about now.
No, no, yeah.
And we don't know, I don't know about, we don't, Carol, how come we weren't notified all that? If the tax structure isn't right now. And we can try to add something to it.
Mm-hmm.
We're just guilty as next to, let's get it squared away first through the circuit breaker, make sure the town is gonna get the money back. Then we'll know exactly what we know.
The town is not gonna get the money. Well, the, the reason I can take it. He taught to the person that runs the program. Let's say that it's funded, it's pointed sixteen. And they have no intention of money on the floor.
Right.
So what, the person in Hartford. Is managing. So they didn't keep it going. It's still gonna be mandatory.
What is that?
The minimum's gonna happen.
Yeah, I think it's one of the first. What is that person getting paid to sit in the front shorts to gather?
Read reports the whole time, and they go.
And I think we got an obligation as tax committee to point that out.
Oh, we will, that's, I agree.
But I, I'm not, I, I can't support. You know. This, no one.
Hmm.
Do that square away. Time you know, I know.
Well, it's, it, I'm not saying the program isn't being done right. He's channeling things correctly. What I'm saying is, we're just not getting any.
And done locally. Or not sending any money.
Any money, so, okay, so once got, actually, once got. We, we got it through the minimum. That's gonna continue. The minimum's gonna happen regardless.
I mean, I give my suggestion.
Pardon?
I say that would be a significant. Well, it's gonna have to go, and it's gonna be us, it's gonna be. Elected people.
Well, that's gonna be for the.
Represented.
That's what we have to decide as a committee. So that, that's the gist of it. So we're, we're, we're really right back to square one, but I think we felt better about proposing. More tax benefits, because. It was almost like the town was gonna kick in its share, and the state is already kicking in its share, even though we paid the state, we're the ones giving the money anyway.
Mm-hmm.
But, I, is that a sense that?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause then drastically affects what I've been working on. If there's no reimbursement from the state at all, then it.
There's, well, there's.
Another. No, we found that out before Monday, cause we wasted some time.
Yeah.
So, going forward, this is our minimum, we think the town should offer an optional thing.
No, no, let me back up. This is what. We had talked about doing.
Right.
In prior meetings.
Yeah.
Before we found out this new information.
Correct.
So I thought the bare thing to do.
Uh-huh.
Was to write this report.
Yeah.
Cause it was pretty much written up until. You know. Yesterday.
Right.
And I found all this out. So. Gotta find out what the committee wants to do before we do anything else. So what the second, exhibit two part, the proposed. That's. What we as a committee had said. Let's try and do that. And last week it said, you know, put in some numbers, see what it's gonna cost us.
Right.
And make those assumptions, and that's what.
Uh-huh.
So I got the, the numbers for the actual. As close as I can get it without doing someone's worth of work, we're not gonna get it done in time. Um, so I put in the maximum benefit and what that could possibly cost us.
Uh-huh.
So it's got to be costing us less than the thirty-nine. And, and I said, well. Pretty much a guess. Based on the numbers, this is what it's gonna cost. If you do our proposal. So the question then comes out to.
Uh-huh. Oh, we love as an optional program.
Yeah.
No, we.
We have to do, we have to do the first one.
Right.
Cause it's mandatory.
Mandatory, unfunded.
It's not.
This is not.
My, my thought among is one of two. Either we go to Bob and say, we've done a lot of work on this.
I mean.
And to find out that the information we're given is inaccurate information. That the assessor, and I'm gonna say that that, uh, does not have a breakdown on who gets what, that he could definitively give us this information.
They, they know it. They would have to go in, he'd have to go and manually pull each file.
Right.
So it's not computerized.
You would think that that would have been done. I'm just saying, in, in, in our day and age.
Yeah.
You're giving money away. Just, I'm sorry.
Just, no, I, no, no.
It gives me the feeling of inefficiency in us running this business.
Um, I mean. Can't argue with it.
Really bad.
Is it possible? I mean, it's possible, I mean, I want it proper. What you say, we're gonna, we're gonna make them aware of what we found out.
Absolutely.
You want to finance this guy to know.
Mm-hmm.
We don't know if they know or not, that we're only assuming, we don't wanna do that.
Hmm.
If we tell them, then we know they know. Or the selectmen say anything, we tell them, they know. And ask them, say, okay, I wouldn't do it with sixty days. Well, because of circumstances, can we extend that sixty days?
No. Bob told me at the very beginning, they'd have to do it all over again because it's by state statute.
We'll give another sixty days then.
Well, they'd have to form a new committee. Would you, which, which I guess I could do. I don't know, but Bob did tell me, you've gotta be done within sixty days.
Okay.
Although, because then you've gotta be disbanded. You can't be a permanent committee.
Yeah.
So, did you catch all of it?
So, so, yeah. So, well.
So what would be the plan?
What would be the plan?
Yeah, uh, that's exact, I think that's exactly right. Why extend us? It's. We, we now know everything we need to know about. The programs that are in place. And what it's costing the town. We do, we, we know that now.
Right.
But we assume we were getting some money from the state, which we're getting a fraction of. Well, the question comes down to, given what we got. What should we recommend?
We have to submit Bob and good case interest to do this test, because he thought reimbursement was a fact.
Yeah.
He didn't know otherwise.
He, he told us, I mean, in the beginning, he was, yeah, we're, we're getting money from the state for these programs, and should we put in any more?
No.
He didn't know. He still is, I mentioned it, I just talked to him, but he, but I didn't tell him this, because I didn't wanna, I wanted to talk with you guys first. So he doesn't know yet. He doesn't know.
Which I, I'm mainly frustrating, I'm sure you do too.
Mm-hmm.
That there's no communication, that we're, or been asked to do a, a plan.
Yeah.
And that they have not gotten their facts, and have not even brought him in to see, that we have given them one. So it, well.
And, and honestly, when you're talking about one half of one percent of the budget.
Yeah.
It's, it's not something that is gonna garner a lot of attention. It, it's, I'm a twenty-two million dollar budget, it's less than a hundred thou- it's less than fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, it's one of the smallest items.
Yeah.
In the entire budget. So. It, it may be, but when you say, well, why did you, if I, if I was running it. I would wanna be focusing in on a lot more important stuff than this, to be honest.
But you said when you asked the question, Christine immediately knew the answer.
Well, because she had it up on her computer or something else. She was all, please say, no, don't do that. So.
But that explains why I couldn't find it. As long as.
I'm grounded, yeah.
But it wasn't on the line item, it's a, well, to be clear, it wasn't a line item registered as zero amount, like other things.
Yeah. But, let me. A, a little more information. When I originally asked the question and talking about it. She and Daryl were kinda thinking it might have been in, it's a mistake, it's, does send us a lot of money.
I mean, of potential.
Yeah, it's a government, it's millions.
Right.
And she said, maybe it's in there. So they started, they had to go do some work, find out who's in there, who wasn't. And they.
It's, so she didn't know right away.
No, well, not like, oh, okay.
No, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Right. That's where we're at. So I. Honestly, I don't see the need to go another sixty days. Um, I think this is gonna weigh down.
We either do it down, do it as planned.
Right. And, and, you know, um. The town is, the, the. Median income in the town is above state average. Um. And we have a number of people that are in financial difficulties. So the question is.
Medium income is above state average.
Yes.
It's the state average, you know.
It's on the. Census data, the.
One hand. I think it's a hundred and twelve thousand. Well, we're down.
We. They're four. They're murdered. No, no, it's separate, separate.
The town's median income, household is eighty-five thousand dollars, slightly above the state average.
Right.
On the town, the median income seventy-five percent, I mean, income or less will receive the benefit. Majority of the income goes to less than, you know. Having less than half the town.
Here, here's, this is from the census data, that. In.
Uh-huh.
In the median, you don't have.
Okay, no, I, I own it, I got. For the CHF, they owns, and it said the median income, actually, the median income of North Stonington for CHF, they owns, it's only twelve thousand.
That may be in the, one of the, they said they're on fourth floor. So here's, here's the census data, which is the data you, you have to go, I mean, that's private data, this is. The census data is North Stonington. Median household income eighty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. New London County median income. Seventy-nine thousand oh four. State median income. Eighty-three, the household income eighty-three thousand five seventy-two.
Let me find that census. I gotta look that up.
Hey, this is, this is the United States Census, which had approached last year, last. Hold on. Twenty twenty-one. That's not. They see us twenty twenty-one. And they could use a five-year averaging. And some of the numbers, that's not gonna change much.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this is from New London County. So. Unless, unless this data is on. Yeah.
I can imagine.
To me, it's, well, but at this point, we ought to be in the reporting part, with part of the report, or verifying. The numbers that were coming out, you know.
Right.
The fine tuning of things.
Right.
Not nature.
Well, your, your work.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's why I based that on.
Yeah.
So, um. Um, I'm trusting, uh.
Do we need to?
And, and again, I was gonna include this.
Yeah.
As supplemental information.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
In the report.
Yeah.
So if that's true, which I'm guessing it is, if it's true, then. Then it stands the same in North Stonington. The income in North Stonington, when you look at the entire report, and remember, you had, you only get Fairfield County. Median income there is probably. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But then you gotta look at Bridgeport and Hartford.
Right.
So, a lot more people there. So.
I mean, what I would say.
That is, if it's, both needed, if those numbers are correct about income. Then.
We're above it.
We're above it. And is it? Something we could support? Increasing. The circuit breaker program from. Basically. Forty thousand dollars. To seventy, thirty thousand dollars. If we think it's even justified, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm, I.
Right, well, I guess my only, my concern at the moment is. That we don't have real actuals.
You, you're not gonna get real actuals in time to make any.
Yeah, because you have to go through, pull those sixty-one files and figure it out.
Mm-hmm.
So we.
And I, and I did say, um, cause, there, her. It's gonna be a lot more of this is, God, I took this in mind.
Um.
Yes, I would, in our. In our, in our recommendations. For future effort, why don't we make a list of all these projects that haven't been accomplished and handed it to us? So that whoever does this in the future has more accurate information.
I, I think that'd be.
Because.
Very. Uh, good thing to do.
We're, we're here to make recommendations on how to make this right, communication between the multiple offices that have different sets of.
And accuracy. Would be. Accuracy of data, would be another one that. Verification data will be no longer, um.
I guess then my recommendation would be maybe have a meeting with Bob Monday morning, before we get back together.
Yeah.
And kind of give him the highlight of what we've just discussed.
Mm-hmm.
How we feel, um, that we're not saying we're not looking forward to helping people. But that we really are struggling with numbers.
Yeah, because we, you know. It's, we thought it had, and now we don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we needed that, if you're on a circuit breaker. And you get the mobile phone, you could add in two together, so true.
I'm not following.
In other words, like if somebody's got a state program, they get a certain amount off of the debt. And then we recommended the other one. They add that to the circuit breaker.
That's what we're proposing. That, that, his proposal was to double it.
Yeah.
Remembered it, that, that, let's just make this simple, we'll double in the program.
Hmm.
And. So it's the same thing, yeah, it would get. The minimum plus the additional. But the, 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 the point is the town's paying all of it.
Right.
We thought, well, the state was paying for the first part.
Right.
But they're not. And they're not going to.
Right.
Well, and that's why I say, until that's all squared, I'm not gonna stop taxing, you know, recommending that, taking taxes off of this person. You're robbing a big ball.
But the percentage is.
But that's what, first, that was what we were going to do anyway.
It's true, and we even thought the state was doing it nearby.
But that's our money anyway, as well, that's something you said, that's, that's my position. It, it's all our one, the state right now doesn't have any money except ours. So.
We're not approving this, even if you finance, board of finance is going to approve it, we're making a recommendation, that's all.
Right.
So we can go forward with that, realizing that there'll be an additional amount of tax and stuff, but
that's what the office makes a decision, right?
And I think if we say, well, we're doing, if we go forward, if there's a committee, we both say, let's give them some more. A, it's not, the whole scheme of things, it's not a lot of money. For the individuals getting it, it represents a substantial amount of money. Um, and the town is pretty financially in a position to help people who don't have the money that much. Because we're slightly, or apple and community. I mean, I think I'd feel a lot different. First time since median income was much lower than I'd say, you know, kind of all in this together, but kind of not. So. But there's no getting around it. The town's going to make up the money.
Right.
All, and the town's making them all in.
Alright, so can I make the recommendation?
So is there a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, speak with Bob first Monday morning.
That, that, that I go speak.
That you, the president of this, you know, goes to Lou, meet with Bob uh, to discuss our findings, uh, our recommendation. Uh, and that with the full knowledge that the town would be paying for it, as it has been doing for the last eighteen years, what seven years, seventeen, eighteen years. And it hasn't really hurt anyone from a financial perspective, and it's helping those that are in need. And leave it that, and I don't mean to make this a long one, but to leave it then, it's up to the board of finance to make the final decision.
Well, that's.
And then maybe we close it on Monday night. My.
I, if we don't close it Monday night, we're closing it that next Monday night because we're out of time.
Yeah.
So, anything you want, by the way.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm going to, between now and Monday, I don't have the time to, now, especially now with this new information, to finish writing up everything I was working on, getting these numbers as late as into this process as. Is, well, very frustrating, yes. Instead of sixty days, I have a week.
Right.
So.
But it's how, to that point then, if you would maybe think of this as a way to include more conceptual than hard dollars, because that we can do. We can show the impact, we can show the general impact.
Now that I have these numbers, between now and Monday, I hope to have all that figured out with the potential impact based on the current numbers, then the, even now that we know that we're not getting anything back from the state, some of the other things that I, I need to write up or think, think through is other ways to generate income, right now, the only plan we have is tax people higher or bring businesses and tax them. Uh, there's got to be some other alternative ways to seek revenue in this town.
Well, that's what the economic.
And that's, that's their job, but they're all the taxes. Yeah, they're only looking to develop the current base, not looking for alternative ways to either reduce expenses or to increase revenue legally.
Legally. There's no other, this is going to get back, league, there's other alternatives, the state. Connecticut. That's the.
They have a group of another place.
Oh, yeah, oh, it's true, absolutely, no reason not.
This, this, right, the part of this I didn't get to yet, I was hoping to get this part done first.
Yeah.
Uh, but so I'm going to do the best I can to write this. It's, it'll be made, but I can, I'll try to write up, recommend, future recommendations based on
well.
The public services.
So Connie made a motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
That you go on Monday and.
Yes. Any more discussion on your.
I, I, I agree with you going and talking to Bob, but I also think board of finance ought to be, have a heads up on this thing.
Well, that may be for him to do.
Well.
They've never been.
Right, and that's, that's.
And you know, how about, how about we do this? We expand the motion to include. I can see.
Wait a minute.
Nelson, um.
Sarah Nelson.
Sarah Nelson. That I will also talk. I, I don't have a way to get in touch with her, right now, I'm sure I'll find one before, I can get there by Monday.
Should we go through a liaison that we've never had, or do we go direct to Paul's times?
Well, they've only heard of people there.
So you, you want the most approved, no, I'm talking about, I was talking to the liaison.
Yeah.
Just saying, okay.
And they, they asked me, uh, because I went, you know, I'm going with budget.
Yeah.
And they asked me, oh, about the tax. And I just said, well, we've been working on it, we're working on a proposal. And it should be covered, I didn't know about this either.
Nelson's there.
So, to me, like I say, I, I like to see that part taken care of and squared away with the state. You know, you say they're not going to give it to us. I, I say, I say, no, I don't want it to.
Well, we're not there yet.
Let's just get.
Let's get, let's get to the point where we can understand and will not understand, let's get some feedback from Bob, Sarah, and we'll run from there. You know, they make a back and say, there's no inflation anymore, or they may say, sure, let's do, I don't know.
We don't have.
They haven't been here.
I don't think you'd really answer back until Monday.
I'm going to talk to them, I'm going to tell you what they tell, what she tells me or Bob tells me on Monday.
Ask them to come Monday.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, especially Sarah.
And if Sarah doesn't, could they make sure somebody comes?
Somebody comes, I'll find, yeah. Okay.
And granted, they appointed her or voted her to do it, it hasn't happened, so the honest is back on.
Yeah, so with that, any more discussion? The motion in a nutshell is that I go talk to Bob and Sarah Monday, advise them of what we've come up with and begins and get feedback as to their from what I tell them. Uh, I believe it is general, you know, is that you, must you want to read back what you wrote?
What she had said was to meet with Bob and you mentioned say, and Sarah. Um, to make them aware of what we learned and our recommendation, even though no reimbursement since twenty sixteen. And just put it to them as a decision, we can make a proposal to define a specific on the board of finance.
Yeah.
And we, so then we can say we've done our due diligence and it's up to them to make.
And I think, and we, you know, we've got only the one thing that you mentioned, John, but the feeder services, that, that's going to be in our report. We talked about a monthly payment plan for people don't, can't afford to make two big payments, that, you know, that and not charging literally user rates. Things like that, we can, we're going, I think we should definitely include in the report.
Yes.
Um, whether we recommend giving more money back to people or not. So, this. So I think we should feel good that we've at least
given them.
gotten this thing to the one we can give to the report, and now maybe we include, truly include um, the need for um, better accounting, better interdepartmental this communication. Because it got in the way of us doing the report, right?
To be clear on this. You want to oppose this part in the motion?
No, 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 I'm just going to tell them about, we just found out we're not getting reimbursed.
Yeah, like I say, I don't, I don't want to create this.
Right, so this week, and our recommendation, so you're not going to get into that with benefits. Or you are, actually.
After, just that.
Yeah.
We had been this point, but now does this information, should this information change what we're doing here?
Or should we go forward in this?
Or, you know.
Right. And then next, next meeting, uh, yeah, that we can vote.
A Monday.
Have some.
All the trips. Well, then. But you can make your next, which.
Yeah.
But you can make the next meeting.
Well, after.
Let's just take a look at our calendars, I think.
Four.
Twenty-seven, I think it's.
Uh, twenty-seven is Monday.
Right, uh, this March. Well, then the next one would be, uh, our next meeting would be the sixth.
Six. Now, there are sixty days.
Yes, yes.
I can make a six.
A six. Then.
And the deadline, because the deadline, I'm sorry to say, the deadline is the ten.
That's what we're just going to say.
Yeah.
So, we may have a meeting on the sixth. Well, probably we'll have a meeting on the sixth and get to it this time. But if, worst case, we're going to meet in the sixth, we may end up having another meeting on eight, nine. Just to keep everybody in tune with it, because I thought we were just like, this is, we're going to be done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if you would ask me Monday.
Yeah.
Well, I said, we're going to do a final report and
Yeah.
have some ice cream and cover, cover board, but that's.
That is a discussion, we might be though.
That's true, Joe.
It might end up.
Well, we could, I could come back and say, hey, it's been great, but.
But they're.
Um, we're not going anywhere, yeah.
Staying with the existing program and not even making any recommendations.
And are you aware?
You know, we still.
Yes, we still.
We still have to make the recommendations to fix the miscommunication.
Yeah, well, that's all the, oh, yeah.
Well, we just.
Oh, we'll do it diplomatically, but.
Well, I was going to say, you know, we can't, we can't put that, I don't, I would not be comfortable putting that in writing. Because we're really then, well, it's going to be on the tape anyway.
It's already there.
But we signed it.
Can't escape that.
You can make those recommendations in a way that, that are just an encouragement to do something as opposed to a criticism of what's not being done.
Right, okay.
So that's.
Okay, well, we've got to be right and fully improve on that, that's what we have to do.
Well.
Well, I get, I get your angst, Brian, but we can't change what the state is not going to do. We can't, there's nothing in this world that will make that, make them pay us. We're just a little town in North Stonington, and there are many, many other states that are doing this, are not fixed towns that are doing this. So I understand your concern.
They don't know, do they?
No, 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 that, I'll be, my experience with what I did all the time, not here, but the unfunded state mandates is a problem in the entire country.
Right.
So, there, and the thing is, just so, we're wrestling with an unfunded mandate for fifty thousand dollars. The school wrestling with unfunded mandates for a million dollars. So, they know this is a problem.
And so I'm saying, do add to it, that's all.
It's not costing us that much money. It's not like you're saying in the previous question.
Why I was trying to get extra, so people can, is it deficit?
Yeah. Well, let's, let's save the conversation starts how we're going to go with this.
Basically, you know, like to them.
Make them aware, well, aware of this situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is what kind of like a still, because you know, we have, we were operating, I don't assume so. But we were assuming based on information we got from a number of people that this is where we were. And now we're not.
And we're asked to do this.
Right, and now we're not, so what do you, what do you think? To your point, but it could be a real quick meeting next time, we're done separately, you know, things are turned on. Right. Or it could be, hey, do it anyway. So.
I think we need to do a report to find out, to report on what we did, what happened.
Oh, that's going to happen. We need to all of this work not to have some tangible handed to the financial.
It's like, you're going to show them that, but it's not going to go before the plan yet until we all vote.
Oh, for sure, oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's what I'm trying to watch.
Yeah.
That still won't be.
No, 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 nothing.
I mean, they, you can tell them about it.
That's what I am.
Don't, don't say this is the, the final report.
No, 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 I don't like that.
And I don't want it to be the final report, because we go through it. You know, I mean, page by page, because I got some things, I like that, you know.
Okay.
And it's, it's nothing important, it's just the way it's worded.
Okay, I'm fine. Yep. It, it's hard, that goes, if there's something in the body of this background current programs. And you've got comments, let me know what they are. And I'll start to incorporate them.
Do that, no, or do that.
Take it home and read it, that's what I'm going to do.
Well, I, I, I read the old one. And basically it's going to be in the.
The new one I, I rearranged, and I did make a bunch of changes.
But one of the big things, I see it should be according to the state statute that allowed us to. We ever vote on this motion?
Oh, yeah. No. All of them favor the motion?
I.
I, and most.
And so.
Pick up where you just left at, yeah.
There's a way, there's a formula for tallying down votes, you would say five, Chad, you know, if it's five, four, and then zero, zeros, because you could be.
Twenty-four, oh, four. Zero.
You know, if it's yea, nay, abstain.
Right.
So I think what we should do is like, Brian, you've got your notes, put it in the new format. I think we should take it home, I think we should digest it, make one concern, we'll come back on Monday. Uh, get a report from Lou as to what he is now, made, been, he's, he's surprised them of what's happening. And then we can, you know, we're going to finish this, but we're going to finish this report one way or another.
All right.
Right.
What do you think? What do you think, what do people think?
I make a motion to.
Hold on, hold on. You all right? All right.
Yeah.
Go ahead, make your motion.
I make a motion to adjourn. It is five-ten.
Second, is there a second?
I don't wait.
Yeah.
All discussion. There being none, all those in favor?
I.
opposed? Have a nice Friday night. Enjoy the weekend.
Yay.
It dropped, you should say it on.
Right. Oh. Let me just.
I guess what, oh, I didn't.
And when, and when.